I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome everyone this evening to the August 19, 2013 meeting of the Williamson County Board of Education. Before we get started, I'd like to ask that you turn off or silence your cellphones, please. I'd also like to welcome Officers Dominique Calvani, Officer Eddie Gully, and Officer David Hadley who are here this evening providing our security. We appreciate your presence tonight. First item on the agenda is the pledge. If you would please stand and join Board Member Sherri Hammond for the pledge, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. Board members, if you would please register your attendance. Thank you, we have 12 present. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and before we do that, there's a couple of matters of housekeeping that I'd like to call to your attention. On item 1B, on page nine, on line 21, insert the word "B." We also have tonight a new item 1E, it's a new page 35, you have that at your place And you have a new page 105, this is item 5G, it's a board resolution to reopen TCAP Are there any other corrections before we move forward with the approval of the agenda? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda? Motion from Mr. Welch. Second from Ms. Mills, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. As part of the approval process for this evening's agenda, the board approved the minutes from the June 17, 2013 meeting. We approved board policy for second revision 4.2093, work-based learning. We approved the field trip fee request, the school board annual agenda for 2013-14, the board meeting dates for 2013-14, the SICLE Bank trustees for 2013-14, board parameters for the 2014-15 calendar, outstanding purchase orders for school activity funds, Title 3A, Part 1D, FY14, immigrant grant approval July 1, 2013 through September 30, 2015, Longview Elementary Playground Shade Structure, an easement request, Rolling Hills Community Church lease at Edmondson Elementary School, and Clearview Baptist Church lease at Trinity The next item on the agenda is public comment. We have 10 individuals who have signed up this evening to address the board. Our guidelines for public comment is when I call your name, if you would please step to the podium, give us your name and your address. You have a minute and a half to address the board. Mr. Anderson, who sits to my right, is our timekeeper. He will begin your time after you've given us your name and address information, and he has some cue cards to help keep you on task. When you hear the sound of the beep, if you would please conclude your comments and take your seat. First individual who signed up for public comment is Lisa Nimitz.
The Cultural Landscape textbook is rife with misleading ideas. The textbook depicts capitalism as evil, Marxism in favorable light, page 68. The text states China's citizens have accepted the benefits of family planning, page 75, when in fact China forces abortions in orphanages which are full of baby girls. Government does not subsidize two children per household, which misleads our children to think Chinese citizens have accepted oppressive government policies. Also, misrepresents what foundational Christian beliefs are. The text reads Christians believe the earth was given by God to humanity to finish the task of creation. Are there any Christians here that have this belief? Core beliefs are that God created the universe in six days, as stated in Genesis, created man in His image to have relationship with Him. Finishing the task of creation is not a Christian tenet. In comparing the United States of America versus Russia, the author creates a moral equivalency between these superpowers, comparing Russia's brutal invasions of Hungary and Czechoslovakia to US intervention in the Dominican Republic, Grenada, and Panama. And last but not least, the topic of Israel. The author has created negative perceptions about Israel and her policies and Judaism. In discussing Judaism on page 185, instead of referring to Israel, and there, that's it.
Ms. Nimitz, for the record, could you please give us your address?
Sure. 1826 Barker Road, Thompson Station, Tennessee.
Thank you. Next individual is Lida Minor.
Good evening. I'm here to stand against bias presented in this textbook's content that is an attempt to sway popular opinion to excuse acts of violence towards Israel. In the beginning, the foundation of education in America was to teach people to read and write for the sole purpose of reading the Bible. I believe that. Good leaders don't concern themselves with issues like popularity. They go out of their way to glean a small remnant of truth to stand for and become advocates of it. What are you advocating in the cultural landscape curriculum? It asks if a Palestinian suicide bomber kills several dozen Israeli teenagers in a Jerusalem restaurant, is that an act of terrorism or wartime retaliation against Israeli government policies and army actions? For what educational purpose does this line of questioning serve? It seems to me you're provoking a way of thinking that encourages violence and retaliation toward a nation who we should be encouraging our youth to be grateful to. Wouldn't it take a blind person to not see the attacks on the Jewish people and the Christians around the world? Wouldn't we be repeating the horrors of the Holocaust if we sat silent in our comfort zones as even our children's textbooks were splattered with anti-Semitic, anti-Israel, unconstitutional, and anti-American propaganda? Is Islam presented in a manner in which facts are embellished and its virtues exaggerated while unfavorable, negative, or detrimental information about the religion is omitted, glossed over, understated, or rationalized, thus amounting to indoctrination rather than education? Is my time up?
Yes, ma'am. And for the record, could you please state your name and your address, please?
My name is Lida Minor. My address is 1075 Savaly Road, Pagram, Tennessee.
Thank you. Next individual is Les Cleveland.
My address is 1104 Savannah Avenue in Gallatin, and I'm here today to support not changing the textbooks. The statement, as far as I can see, is okay. Our children can think for themselves, and most likely what they would say when that one comment that everyone is opposed to comes up, that's terrorism. But you need to expose them to these different types of ideas so that they can grow in this area. The second thing I want to point out is that this is an outstanding school district. Until recently, I was a resident for 10 years, and people around this state and possibly around the country are watching what you do. We need to make sure that we provide students with this opportunity. And finally, Mrs. Lori Cardozo-Moore. She goes around the country attacking different Muslims verbally in her speeches, and we've had those problems here in Tennessee, where we have a mosque, where that mosque, we have people attending it that are professors at MTSU and have been there for decades. And yet, we still find that this kind of attitude is prevalent with her. And I think that, please don't get into this. This is religious bigotry and hatred, and you in Williamson County can put a stop to it.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a business meeting of this body. We have this forum to allow citizens to communicate to us. It is very difficult to hear what anyone has to say if there are others in the audience that are talking out above them. We've all sat and listened respectfully to different points of view, and it's my hope that as you sit here tonight, you will continue to sit quietly and listen whether you agree or disagree with what someone is saying. If you don't feel like you can do that, I would invite you to leave right now. Otherwise, we will proceed on. Next is Lori Cardozo-Moore.
As you said, I'm Lori Cardozo-Moore, here to defend my position, and my address is 1858 Wilson Pike in Franklin, Tennessee. Since my presentation before the Williamson County School Ad-Hoc Committee on June 17, I have expanded my research into Pearson Prentice Hall publishers and their authors and editors. The information I have uncovered is very disturbing and only the tip of the iceberg. According to a report by Citizens for National Security, a consultant with the Council on Islamic Education in dealing with Pearson Prentice Hall, Shabir Mansouri, has publicly stated that he is waging, this is his quote, not mine, just for clarification, "waging a bloodless revolution promoting world cultures and faiths in America's classroom," and that the Council on Islamic Education has warned scholars and public officials who do not sympathize with its request that they will be perceived as racist, reactionaries, and enemies of Islam. The phrase "enemies of Islam" is not a veiled threat, and it can be directly linked to the numerous Islamist terrorist factions such as the Muslim Brotherhood, Al Qaeda, Hamas, and others. This threat is very troubling and indicates that the Council on Islamic Education will go to any length to drive their anti-American, anti-Jewish, anti-Israel dogma into our children's minds through their textbooks. Students in K-12 schools lack the experience and skills to validate most of what they hear. They easily absorb propaganda and tend to believe what their textbooks and their teachers tell them. I'm asking you to please remove the textbook.
Next is Kanter Nathaniel Berman.
Yes, ma'am, Kanter Nathaniel Berman, I'm a Jewish Kanter, 3322 Highway 76, Cotton Town, Tennessee. There's a new kind of anti-Semitism. Israel has now become the Jew of the world. The cultural landscape proves without question that the text which we are referring to connects both Israel and anti-Semitic propaganda and disinformation, and it only fuels the hate that must be removed from the classroom. Because hidden behind the smokescreen of anti-Israel fervor is a familiar hatred of the Jew, blood libel, the elder of Zion, the powerful secret international conspirator, the pariah, and the scapegoat of the world. Our children's minds are like sponges, especially at these years. I have a 13-year-old son, Alexander, who, when he was six years old, attended a private school in Gallatin, Sumner Academy. When Alex was six years old, he was sitting in the cafeteria next to one of his classmates. He was the only Jewish child in his class and was very proud of his heritage and his religion. His classmate turned around to him during lunch and said, "You killed Jesus." She got up from her chair and walked away. When my son came home, he was understandably upset and could not fully understand why he was blamed for this. This story speaks volumes about what is taught to our children. As a renowned Pulitzer Prize winner and Holocaust survivor, Eli Wiesel said, "What hurts us as Jews is not the cruelty of the oppressor, but the silence of the bystander." And you, my friends, are the bystander. Remove this book, please.
My name is Abby Wolf. 801 Percy Warner Boulevard in Nashville. I represent the Jewish Federation of Nashville and Middle Tennessee. The Jewish Federation of Nashville and Middle Tennessee opposes the use of this textbook as it is currently written. We're concerned that Williamson County students are being led to believe that terrorist acts of Palestinian suicide bombers can be justified as wartime retaliation against Israeli government policies. In our opinion, this question never should have been asked in such an inappropriate manner. To create moral equivalency between acts of terror and legitimate territorial disputes that are political in nature serves to legitimize premeditated violence against innocent civilian victims. This paragraph should be deleted because of its error, its bias, its inconsistency with the definition and explanation provided in the previous paragraphs on terrorism, and its misrepresentation of international law and the positions of Palestinians and Israelis. If the school board is unwilling to remove the print version of this book as it's currently written, the Jewish Federation has offered to work with the Williamson County School District, specifically the AP Human Geography teachers and students, to help them understand why this book is problematic as it's currently written. With no additional education, teaching from this book in its current form is a disservice to all the students of Williamson County. Thank you.
Next is Tiffany Borgout. Did I say that correctly?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, little slow, I broke my toes this weekend, so.
Tiffany Borgout, 1228 Kelly Court, Franklin.
In the last few months, parents have brought their concerns regarding our textbooks, their approval process, as well as the common core standards, and yet it seems like our local board has done little to address them. Everything seems like business as usual, and the system continues to chug along. This leads me to believe either our concerns don't matter, or B, that the school board has really no power to make any real changes, or maybe specifically, you've been told that it is not within your jurisdiction to do so. If that's the case, then the school board is really relegated to nothing more than an implementation board of federal education policies. Where is our system of checks and balances? I thought we elected the board to represent our concerns and to be a watchdog for our community, not to just blindly implement what the governor signed us up for, especially when there is a national debate raging about this in our United States. Many of the men and women here tonight have collectively spent hundreds of hours researching these issues. They've spoken to state legislators, gone to MTSU to search out books that haven't even been fully written, all in an effort to be informed. But despite these efforts, they are seen more likely as the enemy or people who just don't understand, instead of being seen as the neighbors and the friends and the community members that elected you and supported and campaigned for you. School board members in states like Georgia, Colorado, Utah, Texas, and Oklahoma are taking a stand and saying no to certain textbooks and standards in the face of their governor's decision and sometimes to the public disapproval of their superintendent. Has the road been tough for them? Are they being told they can't? Yeah, I'm pretty sure they have. But isn't that what America is about? We are a government for the people, of the people, and by the people, and we voted for you to represent us, not to be an implementation board for federal policies and regulations. Thank you.
Next is Darla Spears.
I'm Darla Thompson Spears at 186 Sturridge Drive in Franklin. I would just like to, as a fellow Williamson County parent, I've served, just like you. My most recent service is a PTSO president at Centennial High School, and so I just want to thank you for all that you've done and who you represent in this county. I would ask that you, let me read my notes here, that you would remove this book, The Cultural Landscape. If you have not read the book, other than the one paragraph that gets a lot of immediate attention, I do not think you have enough information to make an educated decision in this area. If you have read the book, as an American citizen, you must have noticed the anti-American, anti-Christian, anti-Semitic Marxist comments. With more than 14 inaccurate statements, I do not find it to be a credible source for any students, much less our youngest high schoolers. This is a college-level course being taught to 14- and 15-year-old students that do not have the capacity to understand and process the different thoughts that are being presented to them. As a follower of Christ, I am deeply offended at the Crusades as being our defining moment. They did not discuss Jesus and the actions and the words of Jesus. Yet, when we get into other world religions, the positive things are being produced and being presented to our children. So, in conclusion, I believe that we need to teach our children how to think and not what to think. And this book, to me, is an outrage. Thank you.
Next is Julie West.
And because of growing concerns for my safety and that of my family, my husband has requested that I offer my driver's license for anyone on the board or the officers to examine, but I think we all know by now that I live in District.
I proceed.
After the April school board meeting, many of us here distinctly remember Dr. Looney saying that the decision had been made that the human geography textbook had run its course and would not be back. That statement was repeated several times on Fox News, including Fox and Friends with Gretchen Carlson. Since that time, not only is the book back, but the changes that Pearson promised to upcoming editions are nonexistent. If anything, that book is worse. In addition, we've received an email from Mr. Squires questioning whether the statement that the book wouldn't be back or might not be back was ever made. My question is, once again, we feel like we've been lied to, and we have to ask, who is lying? Is it, I'm sorry, but Dr. Looney and Williamson County schools, or is it the reporters at Fox News and the parents of Williamson County who know what they have heard? Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening. We'll move on to the next order of business, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Good evening, and thank you for your participation in the board retreat from this past weekend. I hope that you too felt like it was a productive meeting. I wanted to give you an update on student enrollment. Our current enrollment numbers are exceeding our projections. The report that I got at the close of business today was that we are 89 students over projection. That number will continue to fluctuate quite a bit until Labor Day or right after Labor Day. So I don't have school-specific numbers, but I can tell you, and from a global perspective, we are exceeding our expectations in the area of kindergarten and ninth-grade students across the district. And so I'll be glad to give you more reports in the days to come as enrollment begins to stabilize. Mrs. Birdsong is going to be available now to discuss some very important news, to include the announcement that Governor Haslam and Commissioner Huffman made today about our school district's performance. Mrs. Birdsong.
Thank you. We're going to save that for last, though, just in case, because we're going to open up our school year with, da-da-da-da, a perfect ACT score. This is Gerald Rains. He goes to Independence High School, and we are very happy for him and his perfect 36 on the ACT. And we're excited for Summit High School and Arianna Ackerman, because Arianna earned Summit its first national honor in school history. She won first place at the National HOSA contest in prepared speaking. Her teachers are Christina Isong and Denise Asbury. And we have a staff spotlight tonight. The 2013-14 president of the Tennessee Educational Theater Association is Mark Saltamakia, and the kids call him Salty, and that is why, is because I'm sure I did not pronounce his name correctly, but anyway, wonderful, wonderful teacher over there at Franklin High School. Now, we're going to talk about the awards that were given out at the superintendent's banquet on August 1. And superintendent's award for academic achievement at the elementary school level went to Walnut Grove Elementary School. At the middle school level, it went to Woodland Middle School. And at the high school level, it went to Ravenwood High School, and that is for academic achievement, for academic growth. At the elementary school level, Clovercroft Elementary School, for academic growth at the middle school level, Brentwood Middle School. And at the high school level, Page High School. Now, on to the information that Dr. Looney was speaking about that was announced by the governor today. Folks, we have 26, count them, 26 reward schools. That is the most in the entire state, and gosh, Dr. Looney can tell you, I think we increased it by, what, 300% or something like that? I was an English major, not a math major. But let's read off the list. The 2012-13 reward elementary schools for performance, and they give out in two categories, performance and performance in progress. Edmondson, Grassland, Kenrose, Lipscomb, Nolansville, Oakview, Perry Creek, Scales, Walnut Grove, and Winstead. Now, we put Hillsborough over here with the middle schools, even though they are awarded Hillsborough Elementary Middle. Hillsborough, Page Middle, Sunset Middle, and Woodland Middle were named reward middle schools for performance. And at the high school level, Brentwood, Franklin, Independence, and Summit High School for performance. For performance and growth at the elementary school level, Allendale, Clovercroft, Crockett, Sunset, Trinity, Brentwood Middle, Grassland Middle, and Page High School. Congratulations to all of our student, staff, and school spotlights this evening.
Madam Chair, just for public consumption, I'd like to further articulate what that word "growth" means from the state's perspective. For those schools that had growth reward status, that means that, on average, a student in that school grew more than one full academic year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Looney. And I'd just like to say, wow. We have a lot to be proud of, and I want to thank everybody for their hard work and their participation in making all that happen for our students. Next item on the agenda is a board chairman's report. I too would like to thank the board members for joining us on Saturday for our retreat. We had an interesting day and very productive. I'd also like to welcome, our new safety director is here with us this evening, Mike Fletcher is in the Fletcher is in the back of the room. Thank you for being here. Look forward to working with you. And that concludes my report, and we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is under unfinished business on page 73, the 2012-13 Five-Year Capital Plan Adjustments. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I do recommend your approval as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. McLaughlin. Do I hear a second? Mr. Welch?
Yes, thank you. I'm seriously concerned about moving the East Brentwood-Nolansville area high school back with the crowding at Ravenwood and Page High growing to its capacity rapidly. Those would be the two closest schools as far as feeder zones, and I'm very concerned that if we wait another year, it's going to put that much more pressure on Ravenwood and that many more portables out there. Dr. Looney, is there some alternative plan here to handle this growth that's there? Because that side of the town is the fastest-growing in the county. So I'd like to know that, and if it's possible, if the county commission approves the funding in the near future, at least for planning, could the planning piece happen? Because I know, construction-wise, opening a school in 18, 19 months is very difficult. But if the plans are in place, the construction can happen in 15, 16 months, I believe, for a high school. I'd have to lean on Kevin Fortney for that. But I'd kind of like to have the answer to those two questions, because I am really concerned about this.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your question, and we too share your concern. Ravenwood High School is approaching 2,000 students this year. We intend on adding a couple of portables there. There are some plans being developed as it relates to how to relieve that capacity in the near term. Assuming that the board grants permission to make this move tonight, we will be asking the county commission for design and site preparation monies for that property. And obviously, we'll begin the design work just as soon as we get authorization. As I discussed in the work session, there is a potential to do something creative in an 8-10 configuration there or 8-9 configuration there to relieve some of the high school strain that we have at Ravenwood in the 14-15 school year. So I hate I can't give you more than that. I understand your concern. We share it as well. And as soon as we can get funding in place, we'll begin the design work with all due haste.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So if this is approved at this evening's meeting, we are pretty assured that you're going to have something in place, that the community will not be having 2,200 kids at Ravenwood, that you'll be able to do something in 2015 with the proposed elementary-middle configuration, whether it be 9-12 added or 9 through 10, grades 9 through 10 added. Because I'm very hesitant to vote for this, knowing that we're going to be pushing this out if we're not going to be assured in some form or fashion that something's going to be handled for the 9th and 10th graders. And I know people will say, well, sports-wise, they can't compete. Well, at that level, they can't compete anyhow, as the first year is in TWSAA, as far as varsity football and stuff. It is still going to be like a JV schedule. So a 9th and 10th grade configuration would be okay, not perfect or ideal, but at least something, so we're not so far overcrowded that school, we can't handle it.
Yes, sir. There are certainly multiple events and decisions that this board would have to make in advance of that. But my intention, as your superintendent, is to provide relief as soon as possible at Ravenwood. And the only way for that to happen is for us to have an option for, at a minimum, 9th graders in the 15-year.
Thank you.
Dr. Looney, since other people can't see what we're seeing here as far as our five-year capital plan and the changes made, can you talk about the designs, not just being requested design for high school, but also the other design, so that they would understand what we're seeing here?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your question. As the board knows, and members of the public may or may not know, the board saw fit to purchase, with the county commission's approval, approximately 100 acres of land. And the reality of it is, the Nolansville, the northeastern section of the county, is growing so much so that we not only need a high school, but we need an elementary and a middle school, all three. And so the design work that we're talking about is to develop a comprehensive campus that serves all of those students. And it may be a K-8 campus, it might be a Sunset-type of configuration on one portion of the property with a traditional high school on the second portion of the property. But once again, this, the money that we're asking for you to approve and therefore ask the county commission for approval at a later time, in September, is to begin the design work and the site preparation for that property, so that when the architectural designs are complete and we have gone through the submittal and approval process, we can begin construction and secure funding, full funding from the county commission for those construction projects. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Ms. Hammond?
And probably just too, for a little bit more clarification, if we can just go back to that, since we're asking for funds to be approved for the design, is it possible that as part of that process, it could be that those dates change or that the high school comes first? Or is there even a possibility to be thinking along those lines? Or really, even with the design phase going on, are these really the dates that we are now looking at and saying this will be the order of the schools?
Right. Well, thank you for your question. This is the best estimate that we currently have, based on current data. As with all five-year plans, this is subject to change, depending on what happens with student population over time. But based on today's enrollment numbers, this is our best guess.
And Dr. Looney, when you were talking about the campus and it being potentially an elementary-middle and high school campus, in the request for funds for design work, are we looking at a K-8? Are we looking at an elementary-middle? Are we going to go back and revisit that? Or, because I know the board was going to have conversation about what type of school configuration it was going to be, elementary-middle.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
And we haven't had that conversation, and I just was curious as if that plan includes that K-8 design? Or is it a, or where are we on that?
Right. That decision has not been made by this board yet. It's a conversation that you will have in the days and months ahead.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 4B. This is on page 77. It's the SAC Financial Assistance Program. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. As you know, we have had some discussion at our work session about using a sliding scale for families that qualify for free or reduced lunch for the SAC program. Just as a reminder, the SAC program is not a tax-based program. It is a fee-based program, and it covers 100% of its own expenses. So those students that qualify for free or reduced lunch would have a discounted rate which is paid in that program.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion for Ms. Mills. Second for Mr. Gregory. Is there any discussion? Miss vote?
Dr. Looney, could you explain whether or not the other alternative, the YMCA, does the same thing?
Thank you for your question. The answer is yes, ma'am. I actually believe it's the same rate. Ms. Goodwin, is that correct? It's very close to the same rate, but not the exact same rate.
So this is offering it out of both options?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is 5A, reconsideration of instructional materials. The information is located on page 79. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I appreciate the importance of the issue at hand and your decision. I took the time to sit in on part of the hearing process that was convened as it relates to this textbook. As a result of what I believe to be the work, the sound work that the committee did, I recommend that the board uphold the textbook review committee's decision.
Someone like to make a motion?
Motion to uphold the decision.
Motion from Mr. Hullett.
Second.
Second. From his vote. And the motion is to uphold the decision.
I think we should have a hearing, but the motion is on the floor. I would like to make amendment to the motion, though, to be considered. Page 7 of the committee's conclusions, they say that the committee recommends that teachers of the course be made aware of the publisher's decision to remove page 260, paragraph from the electronic version and subsequent additions. My motion is a little different than that. My motion is that the teachers must inform the students and parents that this paragraph about bombing Jewish teenagers cannot be used as part of this class in any way. That's my motion, my amendment to the motion.
Would you repeat that, please?
Yes, I will. Luckily, I wrote it down.
Okay.
My motion is that the teachers must inform the students and parents that this, the paragraph about bombing of Jewish teenagers cannot be used as part of the instruction in the class in any way.
That teachers must inform students and parents regarding the paragraph regarding the bombing of Jewish teenagers cannot be used in any way. Is that correct?
As part of the instruction in any way. Yes, ma'am.
As part of instruction. Is that information on a particular page, Mr. McLaughlin?
It is. It's the paragraph from page 260.
260.
I think that's chapter 8 as well.
Can we have a motion? We have a second from Mr. Gregory. Mr. Gregory, did you wish to speak to the amendment that's currently on the floor?
No, because I have to speak before he made the amendment.
Okay. Ms. Hammond, did you wish to speak to this amendment?
I would. I also would be in favor of a hearing, but, and I do support this amendment that Mr. McLaughlin is putting forward, I also would like some additional verbiage added to be communicated. Is it appropriate now to bring that up as part of this amendment? It would be furthering just more of the communication that came out of the ad hoc committee's findings.
You can certainly add that to the amendment, but I think it might be easier if we handled one at a time.
All right. That's fine.
Okay. Okay, I have Mr. Mesra. Did you wish to speak to the amendment?
No.
I don't have your mic on, because I won't take you out of the queue until I know if you want to speak to the amendment.
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wimberly, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Well, that was my original intent, but I do have questions.
Hold on just a moment, because I don't have your mic on.
Okay.
May I speak now?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
So, may I ask Mr. McLaughlin a question? So you're saying that you would be okay if we don't remove the book, but you want this particular text removed? Is that what the amendment would say?
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm not necessarily saying that, but I am saying that based upon the amendment, or the motion that came forward, that if that motion goes forward, that this is the amendment that I would like to add to that motion.
And as I understand it, the ad hoc committee said, the committee also recommends that teachers of the course be made aware of the publisher's decision to remove the page 260 paragraph from the electronic version and subsequent additions. So they intend to remove this paragraph, correct? Okay.
But you're saying the committee wants to remove it?
No, it says the publisher is going to remove the paragraph. Is that not correct?
The publisher, it has been, can I talk?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The publisher has said that he's going to remove that in the electronic versions that are coming out. But that doesn't take care, in my opinion, of the books that are, that were out there that are going to be used, nor does it take care of new books, whether it's taken out of those books that the students would also be using. And not everybody can use electronic version, not everybody will have that available to them.
Okay, I think I understand your amendment to the motion now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills, did you wish to speak to the amendment on the floor?
I would like to ask the question of, I guess, Jason and Dr. Looney, in what I believe is our policy and our procedure that is spelled out in board policy, and in what I believe to be our options in regard to what we are to do with the decision out of this committee, is either to uphold the decision of the committee, to throw out the decision of the committee, or to grant a hearing. And the question that I have is, does this, do we have the authority and are we doing the right thing by making a decision on whether or not to add or subtract language from the decision of the committee? Because I'm not sure. It appears to me that that steps outside of the scope of what we've been asked to do in this situation. And I think that's amending the decision. And if we're not comfortable with the decision of the committee, then I think we should vote to say we're not comfortable with the decision, grant a hearing, and see what comes out of that, or throw out the decision, or uphold the decision. So I'm curious as to what we're supposed to do.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Dr. Looney.
Because Mr. Golden was the hearing officer for the review process, I think the question would be more appropriately directed to the board's counsel, and that's Mr. Bill Squires. Bill, would you comment on that, and then I'll have a closing comment.
Sure. Thank you for the question. You know, ultimately, you start with the overarching premise that the board is responsible for curriculum and textbooks in any classroom. I will say, going to Ms. Mills' question, the way the policy is written, what it contemplates is that the lion's share of the review hearing take place with the committee, and then the decision itself come to the board, if on appeal, like by Ms. Cardozo-Moore, and that the role of the board then is to, as you described, uphold it, turn it down, or have a hearing to do, get additional information or questions you may have answered. Is it possible for you to adopt all or part of the committee's decision? The answer is technically yes. Is it wise to do that? I can't really tell you that, but I will say that what the policy really is looking for is for you all to discuss and review the committee's decision itself and take a vote on what you think about that decision as it came to you.
Okay, then I need to say, I can't support your amendment, Tim, because I think that if we are going to, if we want as a board and believe that we need to hear the case and we feel like that the committee has not made a reasonable judgment, and that would be the reason in my mind that we would exclude that, I think I can't support that, because I think our role at this particular point is to do one of those three things. And if we believe as a board that we need to have a hearing and hear that, I think And if we believe as a board that we need to have a hearing and hear that, I think that's what we need to do. But I don't, I can't support amending the recommendation of the committee. So, that's where I am.
I respect that.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the amendment that's currently on the floor? If you would just signal with your hand. Mr. Welch?
Thank you. Jan, I think you brought up a great point, and Bill, I guess I'm going to go back to you on this as kind of a point of order. If the original amendment put forth by Bobby is that we're going to accept the recommendation of the committee, can we add amendments to that? Because that would seem to be contrary to the motion that is on the floor, to accept. This would be, seem to be a, an amendment to have the hearing or make additions that way, in which case I think we would either need to vote the amendment up or down to accept or to not accept, and then move forward on additional options, including Mr. McLaughlin's recommendation to add a change to it. The second question that I had, I guess, from Mr. McLaughlin, and it is a question. I think I'm asking for kind of some help from the assembled board here to help me think through this, is I understand the philosophy and what you're looking for. It's kind of a, the stated belief of the board that this is not an appropriate statement to make. My concern is, is the cure worse than this disease in this case? And I would point to sort of go to the fact that, Dr. Looney, how many members, or, I'm sorry, members, how many students do we have currently signed up for AP Human Geography this semester?
Just under 1,000.
Just under, how many did we have last semester?
Tim, can you answer that? 600, Tim is telling me.
Okay. So, we've had a, what, a two-thirds increase from last year to this year, based upon publicity that we've had upon this issue, probably not solely on this issue, it's a growing district, and, you know, it's hard to attribute it just to this, but I would say it's hard not to attribute a large portion of that growth to the publicity that this issue has garnered in the media. So, again, my concern, and I'm not saying I disagree with you, but I'm just having trouble kind of thinking with this, is that by this action, by having the teacher point out, trying to think the mentality of a teenage child, having been one myself years and years and years ago, the teacher at the front of the classroom saying, "Whatever you do, don't read this page, this chapter, and verse."[774.01][774.01](Laughter). And then that student, the very first thing I can see them doing is going to that page and that chapter and verse, and reading that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the amendment on the floor?
I do. Am I lying?
Do you wish to speak to your amendment?
I do.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just want to answer, Mr. Welch. I don't disagree with what you're saying in regards to the curiosity of a 14, 15-year-old. That's what's probably going to happen, but I think there's a big difference of them reading it, and that them being part of the curriculum and being taught that. And so, I think that's the thing, is as part of the instruction. I just really feel, so that you understand, everybody understands why I feel this way, is I think it's a horrible thing to compare bombing any teenage innocent person, and trying to compare that to any political stance of anyone that is coming out there. I think to take that to a 14-year-old, I don't, I was a 14 once, too, probably a little further back than you were, just a little. But I think the thing about it is, I have four kids, and hopefully by Friday, I'll have eight grandkids. And the maturity of a 14-year-old, no matter whether they're taking a college class or not, is greatly influenced by what they're taught in school. And I think that this type of thing is horrific, in my mind, that this would be taught in any fashion about any group of people. Or even if it was compared and even talked about in Williamson County, the innocent killing of children has anything properly based upon a government decision to do anything. I just don't think that that has a place at all in the instruction of our children, and that's just, that's my opinion, so that everybody understands where I stand, okay? But I appreciate it much, Welch, and I don't argue the fact that the enrollment and the curiosity of 14, 15-year-olds contributes to how many people that have signed up for the class now.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? I have several people in the queue, but I'm not going to click on your mic, because that will take you out of the queue before we vote on the amendment that's on the floor. Does everybody understand what the amendment is before we vote? Are we ready to vote, Dr. Looney? Mr., oh, Ms., you'd like to talk? Mr. Anderson?
Okay, as far as, if this amendment is approved, what does that mean to the main motion on the floor, since there seems to be a contradictory point here? What are we saying legally when we go here?
Mr. Squires?
Thank you for the question. My understanding is that the original motion was to uphold the decision rendered by the committee. I understand Mr. McLaughlin's amendment to be a modification of the actual opinion that was provided to you, so my understanding would be that you're upholding the decision of the committee with that one change by Mr. McLaughlin.
I think we need to really make this very, very clear, because I see them as contradictory to one saying this is what it is, and the other one saying this is what it is but. If I can speak.
Dr. Looney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Once again, I can appreciate the difficult position that you're in. Consistent with the way that we do business in Williamson County, my recommendation would be to not support that amendment. I agree with Mr. Anderson's position. I think that they contradict each other. My, my opinion is that you have one of three choices to make, and there needs to be a motion, a second, and a vote on one of those three outcomes. And if you just choose to have a hearing, which is certainly your prerogative, then these other issues would be surfaced and come to the forefront. But the decision to be consistent with the way that you have done business in the past, you need to vote up or down, or vote to have a hearing.
Does that bring clarity?
I believe, I am clear what he's saying, that if we do vote for this, then he, Dr. Looney, if I'm saying this right, believes that then we've decided to change the decision of the committee.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Miss Vought?
Could you simply restate the motion on the floor and make it clear what a yes vote, what a no vote is, just so everybody's on the same page? A yes vote will be to uphold Mr. McLaughlin's amendment that teachers must inform students and parents regarding the paragraph on page 260 regarding the bombing of Jewish teenagers that it cannot be used in any way as part of the curriculum. And I think as a point of clarification for the board, that paragraph was cited in the work of the committee, and the publisher has indicated that he is going to remove that paragraph from online version and from future publications.
Did that provide clarity, Ms. Vought?
Thank you.
Before we cue up the vote, Ms. Hammond?
So, again, just for clarification, the committee's conclusions that are in here, and they made, they put forth some directives to teachers to communicate some things out about their findings. Are those communicated? Is that inherent in it that those would be communicated out if it was, if the book was, if their recommendation was upheld?
Yes, ma'am. It would be an administrative function to make sure that we've communicated our expectations of all of our employees, based on the hearing panel's recommendation, should this board uphold that recommendation.
And then, again, just for clarification, I know we've asked it a couple of different times, so if the, one more time, would you clarify if the yes, what the yes or no vote would mean based on this amendment? Is the yes vote saying then that we have already made the decision to uphold the decision? And does the no vote mean what? Would you clarify that one more time?
Currently, the motion on the floor is an amendment to the original motion. The original motion was to uphold the decision of the textbook review committee.
Right.
The motion currently on the floor, which is an amendment, changes that motion that was on the floor. So, it's an alteration to supporting the decision of the textbook committee. So, a yes vote would be that you're supporting that amendment. A no vote means that you are not supporting that amendment, and we move back to the main motion, excuse me, following that vote, either as amended or at the main motion, depending on which way the vote on the amendment, the results of that.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. Textbooks in Tennessee are on a six-year cycle. When is the social studies, this textbook, up for redoing?
It's being reconsidered this year for adoption for the next year.
So, it's got a one-year window with this textbook, is what you're saying, right?
Yes, sir. The review process and the public input process is taking place in the current year.
Right now.
For purchase for next year.
For the purchase for next year.
Yes, sir.
In the new textbook, then, that's being reviewed right now, is this section that's been in question, is that in the new textbook edition that's being reviewed?
Our communication with the author has been that that will be removed in the print and e-edition, edition for the next adoption cycle.
Okay, so they have told you that it is going to be removed. Now, there's no guarantee that the state's going to say that's an approved textbook, right? Does the state is reviewing it at this point, or is it down to the local level now?
No, sir, it's still at the state level.
State level?
Yes.
All right, so there's no guarantee that the state's going to approve that this textbook is, quote, within Tennessee guidelines or the AP guidelines for this class, right?
My understanding is they have narrowed the list, because there were only a few publishers that submitted textbooks for review. I believe that the revised version of this book is actually on the list to be reviewed. What ultimately happens, I don't know. As you know, there is also a legislative hearing process coming up to address the matter, so I have no idea.
Okay, so if it's a one-year window, and they are going to take it out next year, that gives a perspective to where this is.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, by signal of your hand, is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this moment? Mr. Wimberly?
So, in the meantime, until the decision is made by the state, and then I assume us, to whether this textbook would continue, as I understand the ad hoc committee's recommendation, they are recommending that teachers be made aware of the publisher's decision to remove the paragraph from the electronic version and subsequent additions. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Are we ready to vote on the amendment? If you vote yes, you're voting to support the amendment as stated. If you vote no, you are not supporting the amendment as stated. Does everyone understand? Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Your vote is five yes, seven no.
Motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is to uphold the decision of the committee. Mr. Mesra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would not like to uphold the committee as it currently stands. I really would prefer to hold a hearing in order that we may be able to interact and actually dialogue with complainant. I was not given that opportunity, not being on the committee, and I would like that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gregory?
Thank you. I wish I had Mr. Wimberly's voice, or speaking into the mic. I think this book has some redeeming qualities. Found some of the parts of it very interesting, and I could see where it could stimulate some vigorous and enlightened debate among students and their teachers. However, I think we need to be aware and alert to the sometimes subtle and sometimes not so subtle attacks on the founding principles of America, of Christianity, Judaism, and capitalism. For us to sit back and ignore these attacks, I think it would be akin to like an ostrich with their head in the sand. Just if we could, I think it's page 179, there's something that got my attention that hasn't been brought up by many of the folks that have been participating in this. There's a section on the origins of religions, and the first one that we come to is the origin of Christianity. And in that, we read that Christians believe that Jesus died to atone for human sins, that he was raised from the dead by God, and that his resurrection from the dead provides people with hope for salvation. Christians believe that. The next religion to be studied in this section is the origin of Islam. So, one would think that there we would find what Muslims believe. But instead, we are told this. Muhammad received his first revelation from God through the angel Gabriel. The Quran, the holiest book in Islam, is a record of God's word as revealed to the prophet Muhammad. As he began to preach the truth that God had revealed to him, Muhammad suffered persecution, and in 6:22, he was commanded by God to immigrate. Christians believe God revealed. It's not even subtle. I just think that for us to ignore these attacks, and I would say it's radical Muslims, Main Street media, liberal elite, that come after us in subtle ways and not so subtle ways. So, I think there comes a time when you draw a line in the sand, and I think maybe that time for us is now.
Mr. Wimberly?
Perhaps this is a question for Mr. Squires. If there is a hearing, what would the hearing consist of? What would be kind of the rules for the hearing?
To put this into a little bit of context, it's been roughly seven years since you all have had a book request or a book review request of any kind. The last time was 2006, and the book was To Kill a Mockingbird. At that time, you all did not vote to grant a hearing based on what was presented to you. To me, it's not even clear that you've ever done this before, so I say that just to give you a framework to think about this in. The appropriate way to have a hearing, if you voted to do that, would be to consider it in the nature of oral argument based upon the record created by the committee. As you all know, I have provided to you under separate copy the entire As you all know, I have provided to you under separate copy the entire record the committee created, including audio recordings of the hearing they conducted, all of the written materials from Ms. Cordoza Moore and the written decision of the committee itself. Ordinarily, you would give the complainant or the person presenting the appeal a span of time, I believe in this case it's 10 minutes, to present whatever they wish to present in advancing their argument, after which you all could ask questions of the complainant. In response, on the other side, you would also hear from the committee chairperson, which in this case would be Mr. Golden, who would also present what the work of the committee entailed and what they decided, after which you could ask Mr. Golden questions about the position of the committee. After that, you all would have to vote to uphold or deny the decision made by the committee.
Ms. Vogt?
As a member of the committee, it was my privilege to have the opportunity to read this book pretty thoroughly and to listen to Ms. Cordoza Moore's presentation. And I just want to assure everyone here that it was a very professional and respectful exchange, and it was very thorough and somewhat lengthy, but I felt that it was a fair process. I do want to remind everyone that this subject matter is a very broad subject matter, human geography. We've talked about cultural landscape as being a curriculum. It's, it's really not. That's, the, the curriculum is human geography, and the, the goal of the course is an AP course, and it's a survey course. And like I said, it's, it's broad. There's a lot covered in the time that is covered in this course. There's a, there's just a wide variety of subjects. Although that religion is covered in it to some degree, it's not any more covered. And I wanted to also let you know that one of the big takeaways for me was the fact that this is but one resource used in the course. The AP teachers who teach this course utilize many resources. In fact, at the end of every chapter, as you know, there are a lot of resources listed. So I would like to remind this body that in the context of the course, this is but one resource that is brought into the classroom for discussion. So I just wanted to share that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peterson?
I just wanted to, I appreciate Ms. Vogt's, her comments. And my, you know, the way I look at this, and I reviewed the, the committee's decision quite extensively, and I just, you know, for me, ultimately, as we, as we just heard, 1,000 students have signed up for this, for this course this year, and I don't see a lot of those students here. So clearly, those individuals want to learn. They're, they're, they want the opportunity to, to be taught. And ultimately, you know, our policies that we put into place was to provide the committee the opportunity to, to review this, and they did. And the, what we received back from them was a well-thought-out response. I think that everything that was in there, all the, all the things that were brought up were explained very well with regards to how they perceived it to be. And I think that we should think more on the lines of educating the children of Williamson County, which is what we're here to do, under the idea that they are, you know, they're receiving instruction inside the classroom. And as we know, this book's been in, inside the classroom for five years, correct? This is the sixth year?
Yes, sir. This is the sixth year in existence. It's the third year that we've used it.
Okay. So, you know, and we know that, you know, as, as we've heard, the AP cores are, or the AP scores are good. I just think that we should look more at the idea of allowing our students to be taught rather than being told what we're going to teach them. So that's just kind of the way I think of it.
Ms. Mills?
I think that we have, we are led by our policies, and we say that that's how we operate and that's how we do business. And I think that we have given this complaint fair and adequate hearing through our process. And in our process, I think our committee went to length to try to understand and be objective and open-minded, and it was all people from different walks within our community. And I think they came together and made some decisions that they found probably not to be easy decisions because there's a lot of responsibility that goes with this. And I think they came to a decision, they made some suggestions within their decision, and I, and it now, because the decision wasn't what we want, what Ms. Cordoza Moore wanted, she has the right to appeal to the board. And I think it is incumbent upon us to stay consistent with what we have done in the past regarding these type of, of issues. And I think those three things we taught, we have talked about, what our, what our responsibility is and what it is that we should be deciding. And I think in my mind and from my perspective, if, I, I think that if you don't believe that the committee made a reasonable judgment about this book, then I think you have to do something different. But I believe that this committee went through a lengthy process and they came back with a thoughtful, reasonable decision. And I think when we start getting in to changing what we've allocated through our policy to do, then we need to go back and revisit our policy if we don't feel strongly about it. And I think, you know, at this particular point, I can't see where the committee didn't make a reasonable judgment and a very thorough judgment. And so I can't support overturning or going back and revisiting that because I think the opportunity through our policy has said, this is how we evaluate. And I think to go back and continue to give information and add information is, is not where I think we should be. So I'm, I can't support anything except for upholding the decision of the committee.
Mr. Mesra?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that in, in not supporting to uphold the committee decision, it's not that I disagree with in total or in part what the committee's decision was. And I do appreciate the hard work that the committee did put towards that decision and the hearings that they had. In, in saying what I did, I just wanted to clarify that I have questions that weren't asked during that committee time, and I would like to have the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Wimberly?
To make sure I have this straight, before us now is not the motion to approve, but an amendment that would create a hearing. Am I correct about that?
No, sir. The motion that is currently on the floor is to uphold the decision of the committee, the review committee.
Okay. We haven't been asked whether or not there is to be a hearing.
No, sir. There is only one motion on the floor currently, and that motion is to uphold the decision of the hearing committee.
Okay. I think that I can be supportive of upholding the decision without the necessity of a hearing. The committee's work, based on what we've been given, has been very thorough, very deliberative, and certainly Ms. Cordoza Moore has done a professional and complete job of presenting her, her opinion. So I think I could support the motion to accept the committee's report without the
Mr. Welch?
Thank you. I think Janice's point about having kind of a reasoned and thorough discussion, I think we've had that. I think we've had that by both sides. And to your point, I can find someone's rationale reasoned and thorough and well-thought-out and at the same time simply disagree with them as well. I can respect the opinion of people whose points of views are different than mine as long as it's well-crafted and is factually based. Sometimes there's just different philosophical beliefs that run up against one another. I had the opportunity to listen to the recording of the hearing. I was not there either, but did listen to it from start to finish. I think both sides did this, and as you said, Ms. Vogt, in a very respectful manner. And I think it's important to say too, I don't know if it's, it's been said by the full board yet, but I think we owe a debt of gratitude to that committee, which, which was, you know, taken from the community. We had a PTO member, was to, had a representative of our teachers from our central office, from our Board of Education. So it was a cross-section of our educational system, each one, as, as well as the administration as well. I forgot that one. One of the, the challenges I think we have sitting up here is we're, we have to be decision-makers. And it's real easy to sort of sit on the sidelines and criticize the, the choices, say what's wrong with the decision. That's real easy because it's very rare that there's a perfect decision that, that can be made. And so the simple route, the easy route, is when someone does make a decision, is to just point out, well, here are the flaws, here are what's wrong with it. And no matter what we decide tonight, I think there's going to be some things, there's going to be some downsides to it. Unfortunately, we have some very limited decisions that, that we can make, very limited. We're not able to just kind of start from, from whole cloth, create and put something forth from the start. We also need to take in consideration the classes to start. We have 1,000 students that are currently in the classroom, that are currently taking this course, that currently need to take, currently need to use curriculum. So I guess one of the questions going on through my mind here is, if not this, then what else? And I think we need to address that and kind of come up with that answer because it is important, as we vote, to whether or not to accept the committee's decision or whether we look for an alternate option. Now, I understand that the book, as Gary pointed out, was six years ago it was introduced. And at that time, I believe it was the only approved textbook for this course. Is that an accurate statement, sir?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. And to put that kind of in context, what it is, is the State Board of Education is one that approves these textbooks. And that is our universe to choose from. Now, since then, I believe there have been other textbooks that have also been approved? Is that?
I believe there's one other textbook that's on the potential list. That particular textbook, as I understand it, is actually not approved by the College Board. And the College Board is the vetting agency for giving college credit for that course.
Okay. So then our decisions here, as it would seem, is we have a choice between the current textbook and one other textbook that is not approved by the College Board. And for those listening that don't understand what that is, this is an AP class. It means that it's a very challenging course that the students, at the end of it, can opt to take a test and receive college credit for that. And so this book is not recommended, which I assume means that it is not going to properly prepare them for that, that curriculum.
And I want to clarify, just to be transparent, my understanding is that there are other districts in the state that have received approval, exceptions, to use the, the alternate book. Whether it's a good book or not, I don't, I don't know. I will say that I can speak to our AP exam pass rate in that course, which is second to none.
Exactly. Is there an option to go outside of either of those two books? That the State Board of Education has approved?
Yes, sir. There's always a way. The but part of that is it's a process, and quite frankly, it would not be feasible to do in the short turnaround time that would be required to continue offering the course this year to that group of students.
So what that would require then is to form a committee to evaluate these books? One that we would hope also aligns with the College Board curriculum, if such a book exists. Then we would need to order that book, wait for the months for it to arrive. If it does come in before the end of the course, our teachers would then need to themselves read, develop a curriculum from it, begin teaching that curriculum midway through the session, if we want the third option. All of this, again, good until the end of the year, when a new textbook adoption would happen from the state.
That's correct.
That doesn't seem a reasonable option to me. And Mark, I can go through this book. I agree with you. There are limitations to it as well. There's, there's things that I don't like in this book. It's not a perfect textbook. I don't know if a perfect textbook does exist. I wish this wasn't the textbook that we had, but it is. And I really don't see any other options that we have to replace it. So I think this is one of these times where we need to be a leader. It's very easy to kind of pound the table and point out flaws and everything else, and there are. But to be a leader, you got to kind of step up and say, what is your option? What is your alternate choice then? If not this, then what? And so I'm open to another what. I'm not here to say that I love this book. This is the, the greatest book ever. But I'll be darned if I've found a better option. If anyone has here can give me one, please provide it.
Mr. Gregory?
Well, to address Eric's questions of what else or what options do we have, we can only find out through a hearing. If we vote to support the motion, then there's no chance for a hearing. It's a done deal. So there may be opportunities to address this book and get it to where we're much more comfortable with it. But we'll never know that unless we vote to decline the current motion, if you will, and move on to a hearing. That's the only way to find out what options we have.
Thanks, Mark. Again, you spoke exactly what I wanted to say. Just to reiterate, I think there are probably some other options. I understand, Mr. Welch, you're, you're well-stated problems with both the academic and financial issues in turning down the textbook flat in the current, as we've already started the school year. But I believe there may be other options available to, to, to meet the, the disagreements of the complainant and yet continue with our academic school year unhindered. And I think one of our speakers that came up for the public speaking, Ms. Abby Wolf, stated that there may be some other options available to us if we were given the opportunity to speak with them and try to come to a conclusion.
Mr. Welch?
PJ, I appreciate it, but I'm, again, what are they? To just say, there's, I, I think there's other options. Good. Tell me what they are so that I can consider them. But what I can't do is say, let's just pull the rug out from underneath our students' feet in the hopes that there's other options because we think they are. We don't know what they are, but we think they are. So please, provide me other options, and I will gladly consider them. So please, provide me other options, and I will gladly consider them. It's not. You can ask whoever.
Ms. Hammond?
I just wanted to say, and go back to policy a little bit, Janice, I appreciate Ms. Mills, obviously your expertise on that, but the policy does allow for those three options. I wasn't aware that Mr. Mazra had additional questions to ask. My feeling for saying that I supported a hearing was just to give opportunity available
Mr. McLaughlin?
I just want to add, you know, I still think there should be a hearing as well. And I think that there's a number of things to talk about. Number one, Ms. Vought, when she was talking about the committee, when they went through and considered this, they said, this is just one of many resources they used for this course. Probably of an important resource, but one of many resources. And I think that's what was said. If I misquoted you, you can correct me. So it's only one of one resource, so it's not the only resource. You know, the course doesn't, you know, lift or die, you know, according to, you know, using the entirety of this book. I think the other part is, the committee, on the downside, and I understand the timeframe, Dr. Looney, but the committee also recommends that Williamson County Schools should include in its adoption review process, a review of other human geography textbooks, so that a comparison can be made. I think one of the things that we've continually run into is the fact that the state gives us one or very few choices on a lot of our textbooks. And then we have to choose the best of the worst, in some cases. And I think that, you know, as we move forward, we shouldn't allow that. I think we need to go through, and I understand the short time on this. I understand the timeframe on this, but I think, you know, it's not the only option. And, you know, I have to agree with my colleague to the right, I think that we need to, I think there can be more discussion on this. I think more discussion would be very positive.
Mr. Wimberly?
Mr. Squires, wouldn't the hearing, if one is held, be on the record and not on options? Wouldn't there be another forum, we could discuss the options?
Sure, and thank you for the question. Technically, the hearing would be about the complaint itself and the resolution of that complaint. So going to Mr. Gregory's statements, to the extent that the idea is that we would consider options tonight as part of that hearing, that is not what would occur.
Ms. Mills?
I'd like to call the question.
We have a motion to call the question.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hullett.
You can do an oral vote if there's an objection.
Do an oral vote on that. We have a motion on the floor and a second to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Mazra, was your vote no?
Yeah, it was no. I was going to say, it was next to speak.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Mr. King? Is everybody aware of the motion that is on the floor before we vote? Okay. Just for a point of clarification, the motion that is on the floor, that you're going to cast your vote for, is to uphold the decision of the Textbook Review Committee. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Item 5B1. It's Board Policy Revisions for First Reading, 5.115. Transfer, this information is on Page 81. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. From time to time, it comes necessary to transfer employees. This policy changes some language as it relates to that. It eliminates the locally negotiated agreement, since that no longer exists. I do recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C1. This is their 2013-14 General Purpose School Fund Budget Resolutions. The first is on Page 85. It's the Park State Funds for Technology. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. This has been a topic of conversation for a couple of months. We finally have received the final notification of this grant award for $1,133,967. I do request your approval.
Motion for Ms. Vought. Second from Mr. Welch. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wimberly?
Dr. Looney, what would this money be used for?
Technology, infrastructure, and computers for classroom use.
All of it? I mean, all those things?
100%, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, if for some reason the state made a decision not to use Park, then we still get to keep the technology money?
Well, whether the federal government's involved, I'm not sure. There's ever. Our understanding is yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C2. This is a Coordinated School Health Program. This information is on Page 87. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. Good news, we received some additional funds for our Coordinated School Health Program, thanks to Mrs. Boykin. I do recommend your approval of this grant.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Wimberly. Second from Mr. Mazra. Mr. Wimberly? You didn't have your button pushed?
I did mean to, if I did.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right, not a problem. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the motion on the floor? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C3. This is CTE Equipment Needs. Dr. Looney? This information is on Page 91.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. I recommend this approval as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Hullett.
Second.
Second from Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C4. This is on Page 93. It's Invest Now. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. Before I make this recommendation, I'd like to thank Dr. Deb Enright for helping us put this program together. As Board members, as you know, there is a feature directly off of our webpage where individuals can make donations, tax deductible donations, directly to the schools, called Invest Now. And as a result of those donations, we have received $27,499 for the purpose of buying computers. And I'm very, very proud of Dr. Enright and her work, and particularly thankful to the community members that have supported us in that way. I do recommend approval.
Motion from Mr. Wimberly.
Second.
Second from Ms. Hammond. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
I don't. I pushed the wrong button, sorry.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5C5. This is located on Page 95. It's the United Way Grant. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. We have a fantastic partnership with United Way. They participate in a program called Raise Your Hand, where they provide direct tutoring to students in some of our at-risk schools. This grant award is for $20,000. I do recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Peterson. Second from Mr. Wimberly. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Mr. McLaughlin, did you wish to speak? Okay. Thank you. Next item is 5C6, on Page 97. This is a Verizon Grant. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. This, too, is good news. We have a great partnership with Verizon. We have a $74,709 grant that we need to reallocate for professional development for teachers. I do recommend your approval.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Ms. Vought. Second from Mr. McLaughlin. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5D. These are capital funding requests. This information is on Page 99. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. Before I make this recommendation, which is an intent to fund for $15,410,000, this takes care of the discussions that we had about the five-year capital plan. I just want to make sure that I remind you that this may or may not include the $700,000 of additional general purpose reserve fund monies that we have as a result of closing the year out. So the County Commission may decide to use some of that money for this intent to fund or for some other, with some other directive. So this may or may not include that money. I just don't know, based on what the County Commission wants to do. Regardless, we're going to ask the County Commission for funding of $15,410,000 for these various projects.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Peterson. Second from Mr. Hullett. Is there any discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm just going to say, I understood from the newspaper that we found a million dollars. I assume that's the 700,000 you're talking about.
Yes, sir. I think interest went, rates went way up, Leslie. I'm not sure how that worked.
Is there any further discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5E1. This is 2013-14 Central Cafeteria Fund Budget Amendments. This is a 2% employee raise. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. This is for the 2% raise for the cafeteria workers. Once again, this is a self-sustaining fund. This is just putting the dollar figures in the appropriate categories to get them their 2% pay raise.
Motion from Ms. Mills. Second from Mr. Peterson. Is there any discussion?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5F1. This information is on Page 103. It's the 2013-14 Extended School Fund Budget Amendments. This is also a 2% employee raise. Dr. Looney?
This, too, is a self-sustaining fund used with fee monies collected, no taxpayer dollars. This funds the pay raise for those two, those employees at the 2% rate.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Wimberly. Second from Ms. Mills. Is there any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. Next item is 5G. This is on Page 105. It's the Board Resolution to reopen the TCAP appeals process. Dr. Looney?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair and Board members. This is provided at your request. If passed, would provide a resolution formalizing the Board's opinion or position that the TCAP appeals process should be reopened. Should the Board pursue any additional action to include legal action, obviously that would come back to you as an action item. I do recommend your approval as submitted.
Someone like to make a motion? Motion from Mr. Welch. Second from Mr. Hullett. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I've got, based on the work session, I do have an issue with the last line. The Board further authorizes Superintendent Dr. Mike Looney to take all reasonable steps in effectuating this resolution up to and including unnecessary legal action. I'm not in favor of that, so I'd like to amend that that be stricken from this resolution.
So you're making a motion that the last sentence in the paragraph is stricken from the resolution?
Correct.
Is there a second? Okay, the motion dies for lack of a second. We're back to the main motion, which is approval of the resolution. Mr. McLaughlin?
Dr. Looney, I think it would be good for us, we've had a lot of discussion on this, but I don't think a lot of the public have, and I think it would be hubris to spend just a few minutes of you talking about why we feel this resolution is necessary. I fully support the resolution, but I think it would be good to talk about it just a little bit.
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. And let me be clear, we're not alone. There are 41 other districts, I believe it's, no, it's 45 other districts in the state that have similar concerns. And so to make a long story short, we identified after the testing cleanup process had occurred that three of our students, three of our high school students, were mislabeled, miscoded as being white students rather than Hispanic, when in fact, they are Hispanic. That resulted in our district being identified as needs improvement for Hispanic subpopulation gap. gap closure. We, we took that on the chin because we thought that that was right. The problem, or, or the disconnect came into existence when Dr. David Snowden from Franklin Special School District was notified that despite the closing of the window according to the state guidelines, Nashville Metro Schools had received an exception, and their Native American students were in a similar situation, and they were able to get the record corrected. And so our position is simply this, the record needs to be right. Whether it works for us as a school district or against us as a school district, we hold teachers, schools, I mean, today we identified 26 reward schools. Part of that is gap closure. And so we have all these stakes associated with the data, and it's imperative from our perspective that the data is accurate. Mrs. Hammond asked me specifically about one school today. Why was school X not a reward school? And we had the discussion that it was because of a, a small group. And so it's important, it's imperative from my perspective that the data is accurate. If we're going to hold teachers, principals, school officials accountable for those kinds of results, I just think we should, we should have an accurate record. And because the state provided an exception for one district, we just feel like everybody should be afforded the same opportunity. That's not in any way meant to disrespect or disparage Nashville Metro Public Schools. They've done a great job, and we actually think that it's great that their record is right, that their, that their report is correct. We just want that same opportunity.
Ms. Anderson, can I ask one more question on that?
Yes, sir.
My understanding too, that you have already talked to the state about making this right, and that, and that they have not been willing to do that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I have corresponded with the Department of Ed and personally have talked to the Commissioner of Education, Mr. Kevin Huffman, without success in getting this reopened. And so from our perspective, this would be the next logical sequence in a chain of events to ask formally from the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Wimberly?
As I understood our discussion at the work session and your introduction to this, that we would be authorizing you to urge the Department of Education to reopen the TCAP appeals process, which I wholeheartedly support, but it looks to me that this resolution reads that we would in effect be authorizing you to take legal action without coming back to the board. And I think I'd have to go back to Mr. Peterson's motion. Had I been awake, I think I would have seconded that because I don't think that's what we intended to do, or did I miss something there?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your clarifying question. I do not think this entitles me to act unilaterally without the board's approval to file a lawsuit. I, I do not take that. I do not understand that to be true.
Could, could someone help me understand that? Because it does clearly say the Board further authorizes the Superintendent to take all reasonable steps in effectuating this resolution up to and including any necessary legal action. That sounds like we are authorizing you to sue. Am I incorrect, Jason?
On, in the four corners of the document, I would have interpreted it the same way. Dr. Looney has stated that he doesn't see it as, as the case. He's created a public record that he doesn't see that as the ca, as the case. Based upon that, based upon his statement to you publicly, if this passes, I would advise him not to sue unless he got your authorization separately.
I think I would advise that as well, but it's not what we're saying here.
Well, my understand, let me clarify if I can. My understanding of the conversation and consistent with the letter that we sent the department this week, it talks about the potential of legal action. So for me to talk to the department about potential legal action without the authority of the board, I think would be short sighted. And I, I have forwarded that letter to the commission based on the conversation that we had at the work session, so.
Well, I'm quite comfortable with that, but I'm not so sure I'm comfortable with this last, these last few words of this statement here of the resolution. If, if we took those out, would, would you feel like you would have less strength?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hullett?
Mr. Squires and Mr. Golden might be able to help me out with this, but I believe what we're doing is with, with that statement is we're putting it on the table. So it's just out there saying that this is an option. It's putting some teeth into it, but if we were to come back, my question would be to go to what Kenneth had said originally is, what I'm hearing is, is that Jason said he would recommend that you come back to us to, to go through with that. If we do go forward as it is, would he, or is it carte blanche? He can, you know, at the, the system, and Dr. Looney could just go ahead without the board's approval or knowledge?
Well, before you answer that, I have confirmed and affirmed that I will not pursue legal action without your express authority.
Ms. Mills?
I'm good. I couldn't figure out how to unpush my button. I pushed it two, three times. Tim keeps pushing his. I can't figure out how to unpush mine.
Okay, Mr. Welch?
Thank you. This, this is very simple. Well, it boils down to, to two items for me. The first is equitable treatment, and I believe, Mr. Peterson, you kind of brought up the good point of if this wasn't an issue before we knew about Metro Nashville, why is it afterwards? I think that's a, a great point that you've brought up. For me, the issue is when we speak equitable treatment, we speak about it both ways. At that time, the, the district was told by the state that there would be no reconsideration of the data. Now, that doesn't mean we agreed with the data, doesn't mean with the decision, rather, we didn't think, didn't agree that it was the right choice, but it was the choice. And for us to have a reconsideration of the data solely would have been inequitable treatment for every other school district. We would have been treated better than anyone else, and that would be as equally wrong for someone else to do it. Now we find out that what the state said was not accurate. The state said that we won't consider any appeals, but they did. They did consider appeals. They did allow changes to be made, and they treated Metro Nashville differently, correctly. I don't see any issue with what they did for Metro Nashville. I think it was the right decision, but it should be the right decision for every school district that has similar concerns. So that's, that's the distinction right there. So I think you bring up a, a very valid argument, but I would, I would make the case that what we're talking about is equitable treatment in both cases, both positive and negative towards a school district. The second point that this comes down to is accurate data. What we're asking the state to do is very simple. Not saying treat us better, we're not saying change the standard or anything else. We're just saying use accurate data. Been to many a high school wrestling match where the referee will throw up a two or three points, and that person at the scoring table gets it wrong. Now, when that's done, the coaches go to that table together, they review the scoring, and they correct it. They don't reward the win to the wrong athlete. And that's what we're asking here, simply use correct data. Now, why this is so important to us? Well, for one, we're rolling into an era of more and more top-down dictation from the state about what our curriculum will be, how we'll be measured, how we will evaluate our teachers. And so if we're going to have this, we need to be able to, as a local district, to trust that the state is playing fair with us, that they don't have their thumbs on the scale, that the inputs that they provide to give us our scores is accurate. And it's not. We know it's not. And the impact here is great. Our most valuable resource as community are public schools, the one that drives our, our economy here in Williamson County, is being inaccurately tarnished by the state by their refusal to use accurate data. So I wholeheartedly support this resolution up to and including any necessary legal action. I, I support that far, that, that, going that route as well, if need be. I hope it's not. I hope Secretary Huffman will see reason. I hope he will correct the inaccuracies in the state data, and I hope he will change the mislabel that the state has provided the school district. So I, I do fully support this document as written.
Mr. Peterson?
I just want to make, make it very clear that I, I completely support the document. You know, I support the idea that the data has to be right. I support the idea that, you know, I have no problem saying it. I mean, ultimately, you know, we, we had, you know, the same type of issue last year with regards to, you know, the exemplary and the intermediate and that type of, that type of thing, but I think we all can ultimately say, you know, the 12, you know, that we're absolutely an exemplary district, you're number one in the state, you know, all of those types of accomplishments. I have nothing, you know, I mean, I, I want the accurate data. I want the data to be correct. I think the state should hold themselves accountable for giving us the correct data. But at the same time, you know, I don't, like I said, my only issue is with the idea that, you know, I don't want to use district money to go after something that ultimately wouldn't have been correct in the first place. And we were resigned to the fact when they told us there wouldn't be any appeals. So I understand that once there was an appeal, that changes the playing field. But that, like I said, and my only issue was, and still is, is that I would not support us using any funds, county funds, to, to fight the state when we ultimately know that they're wrong. We know that they did something they shouldn't, you know, that ultimately they said they wouldn't, but I think that ultimately we should hold them accountable certainly for the, for this upcoming year. And if this, if this is a fight that we have to take, then we, we ensure that it's 100% correct this year. And they, and they realize that, you know, that we are going to stand up and, and this resolution goes to that, that we are going to hold you accountable going forward. But like I said, I mean, my only issue was, was that specific line item. But again, if Dr. Looney says that he will ensure and come back to us and tell us that, you know, if that's the route he's choosing, then we would have the opportunity to revote, then I will support this, this resolution.
Mr. McLaughlin?
I know the board is going to find it strange for an engineer to offer a change of word usage, but would it be a problem, Dr. Looney, to change the word necessary legal action to potential legal action, which I think would be a little more along the line? Does that take away strength?
No, sir. I'm amenable to that change.
So Mr. McLaughlin, are you making a motion to change the third to the last word at the end of this document to potential?
I am.
Motion from Mr. McLaughlin, and a second from Mr. Peterson? And that is to change the last sentence to read, "The Board further authorizes the Superintendent, Dr. Mike Looney, to take all reasonable steps in effectuating this resolution up to and including any potential legal action." Is that your motion, Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes, it is.
Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the motion that's currently on the floor? Mr. Mc?
What I was going to say is germane to the motion. I was going to say that I was comfortable with the language the way it was, with Dr. Looney's assurance that he wouldn't sue without the board knowing about it. I wholeheartedly support it as it's written, but I certainly don't have any problem if the word is potential instead of necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Vogt, do you wish to speak to the motion that's currently on the floor? So we have a motion on the floor to amend the main motion, which is the approval of this resolution to change the last sentence and the third to the last word from necessary to potential. Does everybody understand? Do you have that on the queued up? Are we ready to vote?
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes, so we're now back to the main motion as amended. Ms. Vogt?
Dr. Looney, could you talk a little bit about the other school districts that have taken issue with this? Specifically, are we leading the charge, or are other school districts taking it upon themselves to draft resolutions? Like, could you give us a beat on what you have heard through the grapevine from the 45 schools that do take issue with this?
Yes, ma'am. I can, I can tell you that TOS, the Tennessee Organization of School Superintendents, has passed a resolution similar to this, asking the state to reopen the appeals window. I cannot speak to whether individual school districts have done so. I will say that I have spoken to a number of colleagues that have expressed a willingness to take this issue as far as necessary in order to get the record straight.
Okay, and specifically, would that include taking a legal route? If it were deemed necessary, would some of these other schools be interested in pursuing that path?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for answering.
Mr. Wimberly, would you push your button again, please, and confirm? Thank you.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no.
Motion passes. That concludes the business that is on this evening's agenda. There's a number of staff and principals that are present with us this evening. Some already have slipped out because of the late hour, but I do want to take a moment to recognize you and thank you for being here. So if you'd please stand and let us recognize you.
And I actually think all of them received some sort of recognition earlier this evening, so congratulations on your reward status.
Absolutely. Congratulations. We appreciate you, you being here this evening, and we appreciate your support. Also, I, I think it's important that, that on behalf of the board, I express our sincere appreciation to the Ad Hoc Materials Review Committee. I don't know that if everybody realizes what that committee actually did during that review process, but I think it's important that the community understand the importance that this committee, the importance of their job, that they read the textbook in its entirety. They didn't just read an excerpt, they read it in its entirety. They also reviewed other materials, and they listened and attended a four-plus-hour hearing with the complainant. And I think that that is commendable, that they took that time out of their time and did that work on behalf of this board as a result of our policy. Additionally, they wrote the very lengthy report that we all received as part of that report. And so I just want to express my sincere gratitude to each and every one of those individuals who worked on behalf of this board on that Ad Hoc Materials Review Committee. So I thank you very much on behalf of the board. That concludes the business that's on this board's agenda this evening. I want to thank everyone for being here, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
If you've got them, just leave them here if you have them.
You can leave them here tonight, or...